Okay guys, we are back. I had technical issues on my laptop, not sure why. So we're gonna do this whole thing over. This is Frank Abrazino, next to me is Ron Smith. He's a candidate for C2, City of Venice Council. He is running against Dusty Feller. So we're gonna talk about different issues. I'm gonna let him communicate with you and tell you a little bit about himself, why I shared this in my group.
Okay, I'm Ron Smith. I'm a retired prosecuting attorney here in southwest Florida. I was a teacher at the Police Academy, graduate of Marine Corps Officer Candidate School. But I really came to Venice in 1981 to be the editor in charge of all local news for the Sarasota Herald Tribune. My daughter was born here in Venice, at Venice Hospital, and they briefly experimented with birthing rooms and underwater births. So she's a great swimmer. And she's now prosecuting attorney, just like Dad. My wife, I lost her three years ago, but she was a big personality here in the quilting community. And I'd love to say that her quilts are sold at the Quilting Basket Downtown, but I believe in the last couple of weeks Frankie, that closed.
Which one?
The quilt basket on Venice Avenue.
Okay, yeah.
And so that's closed, and I've lost that connection to my wife. And Venice Hospital has been closed down, and I lost that connection to my daughter. But I still love this city. As the editor of the newspaper, I got to write all about the history of it, about John Nolan, about the circus, about why we have all these shark teeth. And I love the city, that's why I want to be on the City Council and want to preserve this city as I know it. We're losing it slowly. And I think the place to protect John Nolan's legacy is on the City Council, because they control, have final authority over the comprehensive plan, over zoning regulations, and over special exceptions. And so I think the comprehensive plan should be enforced, zoning regulations should be rare, and special exceptions should only take place for the benefit of the whole city, not just one developer.
Okay, one thing I did notice about you, which you don't see too often with a lot of candidates after they lose a race, which Ron ran last year and lost, barely. But you stayed active. You were actively involved in leading the charge against the height dispute. And I think there was some other thing you were involved, so kudos to you. Now, we were talking prior to this, and you asked me about the water treatment plant. Why don't you tell us a little bit about that, and your thoughts on it?
Well, the city's been talking for a long time about relocating the water treatment plant. They even bought some land out on Knights Trail for that, in the future. There's some question whether we even need to relocate it. It is in a flood zone, but does that necessitate? I mean, it's functioned there well for a long time. And this week, the council voted, almost a surprise to the community, to buy land ostensibly to relocate it on Venice Avenue, right next to where the police station is. I'm told that they haven't firmly committed to moving the water treatment plant there, but utilities director, Mr. Vargas, presented to the council that he wanted them to buy it, and that's what he wanted them to buy it for.
So where do you prefer it? Nice trail mix, or the location?
Well, I need a whole lot more information there. But I certainly don't want it to be the... What you see as you come into the city on Venice Avenue from the interstate is a water treatment plant. That's not the vision I have of that corridor, which is beautiful. So it needs to be given some real close attention. It came up kind of suddenly. I guess there was an opportunity to buy the land, and it was decided that it was a good deal, and so they bought it. But I am told they're not firmly committed to building the water treatment plant there. I want to hear from that neighborhood. I mean, there's people out at Auburn Road, there's people out there at Three Isles. Is that what they want? Is that water treatment plant right across the street? We gotta look at that seriously.
All right, one thing guys, if you want, I'm watching the group and the page, so if you have a question for Ron, type it in there, and if I see it, I will try to ask him about it. We're gonna do... We were trying to record this before, and I ran into technical issues, so let's cover the two issues we talked about. First, the FOP, and their concern with the salary of the Venice Police Department being at the low end of the spectrum compared to the other cities, and where you stand on it.
Oh, I definitely think we need to raise the pay for many city departments. The police being the lowest-paid department, and the turnover that that causes as people leave and go to any other area of agency, because they pay significantly more, is unacceptable. I support reasonable increases for the general employees as well. I think I told you I was at one of their negotiating sessions with the city, and I sat next to a city employee who was a young mother with a child who was sitting in a car seat next to her. And she was telling me she's paid at a level that she's eligible for welfare, that she gets women, infant, and children payments. And that's not, that's not right. We can pay them enough that you don't have to get federal assistance to survive.
And that's one thing I noticed when I was writing an article last year on the City of Venice Union negotiations, that not one council member was there. And talking to their president, Dan Tucci, he told me, "Well, that's normal, commonplace." You've visited it. Someone might ask, "Was that because you're running?" Or if you win, will you continue to be active, unlike the other council members?
Well, I'll be active, and I will attend. You can't interfere, I mean, that's not the role of a council person. You're not the negotiator. But you can observe, and you can learn. And I was endorsed by the City Employees Union, in part because they said they think I'll listen, you know? And that's all. I want to, I want to learn. I want to hear what they have to say. And I prefer it to be unfiltered. I got educated by attending the negotiating meetings.
Yeah, and just so you guys know, what basically I came out when I wrote my article is that the unions feel like only one side of the story's being told by HR to the council members. And they don't feel the full story. Their version is being included in it. And that's why they thought it was important to have a council member or a mayor just sit there. They don't have to ask questions, you shouldn't ask questions. Just sit there, listen, and take it all in, and get a feel for where everybody's coming from in those negotiations. All right, on to the other issue was the border road. I asked you about the storage unit down there, and where you stand on it. It seemed like there was a lot of concern when I posted that email.
The first reaction everybody had to it was, "This is gonna be, you know, an ugly building in our neighborhood." I think the presentation went a little better when they presented the way that it would look and how they'd incorporate it in the neighborhood. And, you know, if the property is zoned for that use, all you can do is insist that it, you know, be buffered properly, and that it be attractive, that type of thing. What I'm against is rezoning anything to allow something like that in a neighborhood. And what I call spot zoning, where somebody comes in and says, "You know, I bought this home, and I want to change the zoning to professional," or something like that. That shouldn't take place, shouldn't be allowed. It shouldn't be allowed unless there's a change in the nature of a neighborhood over time that requires changing the comprehensive plan for an area, changing the zoning for an area. And I'd like to use the example of the hospital. They built that hospital on Laurel Road. That's changed the entire area. People came in and said they wanted to sell their houses immediately behind the hospital. And that was done, and they changed the zoning to professional, because there are all these services now that are gonna move there to serve the hospital. They used to be all around Venice Hospital on the island. And now they need to move. If you're an MRI facility, you don't want to be downtown Venice now in the hospital out there on Laurel Road. So they're buying property to move those facilities, those, you know, additional medical services out near the hospital. Well, that means we need to be looking at that area in a thoughtful way, and changing some of the zoning for the whole area, not just when one person comes in and says, "I'd like to change it."
So I take it you were against the 10% wetlands with the new publics in northern Venice?
I was horrified by the paving over wetlands for a public. There were many problems with that. The City Planning Agency, City Planning Commission, voted to recommend it not be allowed. They said it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan. They said it's not zoned for commercial. They said that there were issues with the PUD and whether the developer had control of that land, and could do that. They voted no. And the City Council voted to allow it anyway. In order to allow it, they had to change the comprehensive plan. They had to change the zoning. And that's being fought in court right now. And so we don't know what the final outcome is, but citizens have risen up against that, and they have a true issue.
All right, now, one thing I'm wondering is, and I think we briefly touched on this before, the technical issues. A lot of times I hear the council members and say, "Oh, we have to vote for it, we're afraid against it." I put it short, the mayor said that several times. A lot of them blame Burt Harris, that. A lot of them, they don't blame anybody, they're just in the pockets of the developers. I'm not gonna name names, and he won't, but I will if you ever ask me personally. So what are your thoughts on that? Is that viable? We gotta avoid the lawsuit, let's go ahead and vote it forward.
No, they're timid, they're timid. And they need to stand up. The problem is, they have lost a lawsuit with a developer. They have lost a open records Sunshine Law case. And as a result, they're very timid. There are lines, you can't go across them. Developers do have certain rights, you have to honor them. The press has certain rights and access to information, and you can't meet privately and make decisions for the City Council that should be made in public. But what happens is, out of this timidness or fear of Burt Harris and the Sunshine Laws, people stand six feet back from the line when they could be six feet closer to the line without crossing it. And so they're making decisions... Timidity seems like the best word for it. They're just, they're way shy. You can walk up to the line without going across the line. You don't have to stand back in the other room, nowhere near the line, to the detriment of the voters.
All right, one thing I get hit with every year, and I've ran a few times, you've seen me out there. One of the biggest things we always hear is affordable housing, affordable housing, and that drumbeat continues, even more so today. What are your thoughts on that? Does Venice have any tools in their toolbox that they can utilize that you would like to utilize?
Well, we have some new tools. One tool is the new state law, Live Local, and it gives cash incentives to developers if they will build affordable housing according to a formula. Still, to do that, you've gotta come into the city and get permission to build a little more density, and then they can get the cash, and you can get the affordable housing. The city voted to count 750 square foot units as a half of a unit, which means they could build twice as many units in a certain piece of land if they built small ones that might be more affordable. That all by itself isn't the solution, because a family doesn't want to be living in 750 square feet. A single person, nurse, police person, who happens to be single, might be able to do that. So it's tricky. Under that new Live Local Act, Northport got in controversy because the people who came in said they've got these incentives and they'd like to build the affordable housing, but they wanted to build it in a commercial district. And Northport wants more commercial establishments there, and they didn't want that land being used for residences. And so they voted it down. Up in Sarasota, the developer came in and wanted four times the density. And so people got upset about that, that was too dense. So it's that Goldilocks thing, you gotta find the right level. And I think Venice is headed toward the right level by, you know, giving some concessions to developers to build more affordable housing by allowing a little greater density, but not four times the density that would be under a normal plan.
Okay, how about the business environment? Where do you stand in promoting business, trying to drive in more businesses into the community, and working with the Chamber and all that good stuff?
I want to work with them. I did walk, you know, downtown, stop in on every business and just introduce myself. A lot of those businesses downtown, and of course, there's a lot more than downtown in the city. But they're suffering great rent increases because of the taxes that have gone up so much over a 10-year period. You know, over 10 years, the total assessed value of property in the City of Venice has more than doubled in 10 years. I presented that to the City Council. And in that time, all 10 years, there was no relief on the tax rate that usually would accompany a dramatic increase in property, assessed property values. So commercial properties don't have homestead exemptions, so they get the big brunt. Some of the people who live here a long time, their taxes and their assessments can only go up 3% a year because they're protected by their homesteading status. But commercial businesses don't have that protection. Their property assessed values doubled over that decade, and as a result, rents to all these businesses have doubled. I'm aware of two downtown businesses recently announcing they're moving or closing, where the rent increases, which are a result of tax increases, were a big factor in those businesses.
So do you have tools in your toolbox, though, that you can utilize out there? Like, you see a city like Northport, they're going to great extremes to bring businesses there. One thing is, Mayor Feinstein, when he was in charge, he wasn't the friendliest guy, and that's why a lot of people believe we lost a PGT that moved. I think PGT went down to Fort Myers and did it. Tervis Tumblers, I think they went and opened up a location in Northport because of communications with them. And so you're more open to trying to work with these guys and get any new little shops opening and stuff like that?
Absolutely.
Tax breaks?
I think tax breaks for the right business. Tervis Tumblers is a great example there. I think that would've been nice to have that somewhere in the city, for sure.
Okay. I just lost my train of thought on my next... Oh, the hospital. So we have a buyer. How open are you gonna be to possible zoning changes to accommodate them for whatever they plan on putting into that area?
Boy, I'd have to know what they want to plan. It's zoned already to low. Almost infinite number of possibilities, from hotels to, you know, obviously, professional and medical facilities. There's very little that couldn't be there, can't put a factory there. So we're gonna have to work with somebody. I'd love to see it remain in a healthcare capacity, whether it be long-term healthcare, rehabilitation, Alzheimer's hospital, something like that, that takes advantage of that very valuable property and that might allow some of the auxiliary businesses and professional offices to stay in the area, because there's a potential for great flight there, or for tearing it down and changing the entire field of that area. That buyer also got the land that the Chamber Commerce is on, got the land where the elephant trunk was, and some land over there near the car wash, although apparently the car wash is separate. So it's really important. I'm very disappointed that nobody... I know it's a real estate investment trust, and we don't know exactly who invested in that property, but if I'm on the council, I want the staff working to find who that is and what their plans are, because I get asked that constantly. What are the plans for that? And we don't even have communication with the new owners, so that's not a good thing. When I was running the newspaper, I can tell you what, I would've found out with an investigative reporter who owns that real estate investment trust. I think the city should try and do the same.
All right, now, Seaboard. One thing I wrote on one of your ads is concerned, because you were talking about the endorsement by Holic, and to me, that means what he's been pushing is Seaboard. And so people know, and I sent, I believe I sent you a link to an article.
You did.
The idea was to build it out with condos, restaurants, and stores, and then somehow relocate all the businesses down to 75. Who knows how he was planning on painting, but he's been pushing that. Go ahead, and you responded to it, if you want to respond on that.
I do want to see that area redeveloped. The city bought the big cement plant, which, you know, was an ugly thing, and I'm glad they bought that land. The city trash trucks are all located there, public works. And those things can be moved easily and better utilized, that valuable land right there, next to downtown. My thought is that that Seaboard area has to be compatible with downtown. It has to be consistent with John Nolan's plans for Venice. So I want it to be a beautiful addition to the city and not an eyesore. What we have to do, though, is not build my vision of the Seaboard area and not one developer's vision. We need to have a visioning process that I've seen many great cities do, that involves people from the community in the early stages, where a professional leads a conversation about the potential for the area, what possibilities there are in the area, shows drawings to people, and gets feedback on what would you like to see happen in this area. And what isn't needed in that area is a park. Currently, the land that the city has in there is designated as a future park. Well, we don't need a park. We have a large park right across the street at the train station. And we've got the Legacy Trail there. What we need is something that's complimentary to the downtown, in my mind, but I would want to hear from all the city and city residents. I liked John Holic's plan, I met with him a couple of times, and we've talked about it, to have a community redevelopment agency lead the discussion of what do we do with this property. And we would have to take into consideration, obviously, there are a number of existing businesses there, and they have to be accommodated, or incorporated, or assisted in where they might go if they needed to leave in order to complete the plan.
So when you're doing this build-out, let's say, let's say we, Seaboard goes, and they're like, "All right, let's push for a river..." What do you want, like a Bradenton Riverfront, I think? What are you gonna do about the roads? And I think, I think in our previous one before we went down, we talked about the whole infrastructure. Roads are never planned. They don't want it, the council doesn't want to consider it, let the next council consider it. Hospitals, I was talking to an emergency room lady, and she said, "This is, all the beds are fully staffed here in Sarasota. It's not even season." What would you, would you be more proactive in trying to plan for infrastructure now instead of five years down the road when it's a major harper for a lot of infrastructures out there?
I would be more proactive on everything like that, there's no doubt about that. I don't know the problem with the roads in there, but the idea that John Holic had that I embraced, and I know you're hesitant, but I think we can do it right, was to have tax increment financing. What that means, it's a complicated little thing, but Englewood's doing it great, and Tynnes done it successfully. And that means that we currently get so much tax money out of that region, that little section called the Seaboard. And that you encourage new business in there and growth in there, and promise that any increase in taxes that result in the new buildings just in that area, that that money go back into the infrastructure. It allows you to do bonds, it allows you to pay for the infrastructure when somebody says, "I'm willing to build this, but I need the road, I need the sewer, I need whatever." Then the city can pay for that and promise to pay for it. They can approve it, build it, and promise to pay for it with the revenue that will be generated by the new structures there, the new properties, businesses there. So it's a way of not taking taxpayer money, you know, taking money out of the current tax base in order to improve an area, and only using the money that will come in as a result of those improvements in that area to pay for improving it.
That's good to hear that he's considering infrastructure, because I don't know if John's really... I remember one time Neil pulled one over on John, promised that he would give the, I forget what the word is, along the road that Neil owned.
Easement?
Easement. He would give it up for the expansion of Laurel Road to four lanes. And I saw the document, I shared it, and that's basically what Neil said. And then Neil came back and said, "No, no, no, I said I would sell it." And so he sold it to us, and then he contributed that to us, and the paper made it look like, "Oh, Neil's giving all this money." And I remember John was pissed. But that brings up another issue, is Laurel Road, we're still doing all that stuff with the four lanes. Pine Brook's becoming a major headache. I live there, I've heard about a light at my street, which is...
Lukaya.
Lukaya, I can't remember where I live.
Yeah, I got it on your door.
I think we have got a roundabout.
On your door.
Oh, you did? I think we got a roundabout going right there, is the plan. So what are your thoughts on that?
No, we're not gonna have any roundabout. There was a proposal to four-lane Pine Brook Road, the portion that's not already, and to add a roundabout, exactly like the one at Jacaranda, but at the end of Pine Brook at Venice Avenue. And that's a disaster. Nobody seems to know how to drive that circle. It's a European kind of concept, and it's the highest accident intersection in the city. Two of them back-to-back would drive people nuts. But the Central Venice Coalition, and I love them, they came up with a proposal to mitigate the traffic on Pine Brook without four-laning it, without the traffic circle. It's a good plan. It actually has a traffic light at Lukaya and Pine Brook. It has some turning lanes added at the intersection with Venice Avenue so that you can get through, more cars get through on one exchange, one change of lights. Because right now, sometimes during the day, it backs up through two lights, and even a third light change before you can get through. We've gotta fix that. But not with the traffic circle, and not with four-laning it. So I embrace that. I call it Dick Longo's plan, because he's the one who presented it to the City Council, presented it to the public on a PowerPoint display.
But to interrupt you, are we gonna run into the same finance issues that we had with Laurel, where nobody wants to pay? It's the county, it's the city. And how are you gonna be able to come in and work with the county and the different departments to get it done?
It's a county road, and it would have to be a county-paid thing. Now, the plan is much less expensive than anything else that's been talked about. So I think we can get the county to go along with that. We do have representation on the Met Ball Planning Organization that plans the roads. Currently, the status is that this mitigation is all that would happen for the next 10 years, that they would not widen the road. That's the current plan, it's a good plan. The community there seems to be happy with it. They want to see the light, they want to see the turning lanes. I knocked on every house in Pine Brook's house. And I talked to a lot of people about it, and most of them were in favor of what I call Dick Longo's plan.
Yeah, and just so you guys know, with my whole point and what he touched on is, a lot of times, it's more than just the City of Venice. You think that road is there in the City of Venice, it's City of Venice. Like he said, it's county. And then you've got other departments where you have to talk to different entities to try to accomplish a lot of stuff out there. And a lot of times, the average individual doesn't know that. They sit there and say, "You council members suck, you mayor, you suck, you're not getting it done." But it takes a lot more. It takes a lot of work and being able to talk with each other and communicate effectively.
Right. The answer frequently that the city gives, and it's a bad answer, "Oh, that's a county responsibility." And I just hate that answer. I asked about the homeless problem, and they say, "Oh, that's a county issue." The county is in charge of the homeless shelter. I asked, you know, about the evacuation center and whether we need a shelter. And they say, "Well, the county's in charge of evacuation and shelters." No, they're not. I mean, they may have the final authority, but the city is part of the county. And if the city has a need, they need to be working with the county to get it met. And not saying, "Oh, that's not our responsibility." That's a bad answer. I talk all the time about solving problems, Frankie, and I love to say that you approach a problem... The best way to approach a problem is the way you approach a crossword puzzle or Sudoku. You start with the belief there is a solution, and then you work until you get the solution. You don't start with, "This can't be solved."
All right, and you guys, we're still talking, so if you have questions, I'm seeing some comments, no real questions there, so... And I am monitoring the group and the page, if you have any. The next thing is, you brought something up that I wanted to talk about. When I remember it, I will. Let's talk about the environment. As you know, I've always been big on the environment. I haven't been able to surf due to injuries lately, but we still have the same issues. I haven't put it out, but there's a small concentration of red tide up here in Venice, Sarasota. So we're gonna start seeing that we're going into the red tide season, essentially. What are, what are some things you would want to do? Like, I think the city still uses Roundup. I think there's different things out there that we can do. At the City of Venice Beach, we put in a French turn, a French system. I believe it costs about a million dollars. And the pollution basically dropped off there. We weren't closing the beaches anymore. Would you be open to budgeting or financing similar options out at Casco's, at Dog Beach, where we continue to see beach closures?
We've gotta find some money, and I think there's some federal money out there, there's some state money out there we can get to help us with addressing the red tide issue. That's another one that people go, "Well, nothing we can do about that." And I hate that answer. We have a problem with flamingo ditch and fecal matter that gets out there into the Gulf and closes the beach there. We can't have that. We can't have that. And there is some discussion of moving some of the outfalls to the intercoastal and things like that. But we need to work with Mo Marine Laboratory, we need to become a leader in the region in fighting red tide. Instead of being somebody that feels helpless in the face of it, because it's important. You know, former Governor Askew said that ecological destruction in Florida is tantamount to economic suicide. And for the city of Venice not to address that is to damage our businesses, to damage our tourism business, to damage the hotel motel beach based businesses. And so we should be leading, leading in that fight instead of sitting back and saying, oh, nothing we can do about that.
Now, Juliet Smith-Hardisty has a question. What are your ideas to provide places for youth to go, ice skating taken away, bowling alley gone, skateboard at Y gone, look at the growing pop, it's needed. What are your thoughts on that?
Wow. Of course, many of those things are private businesses and we can try to attract them, but I don't think the city can provide those. Maybe there are some things we can do. We do have a lot of parks. And we can do something, I'm sure, with skateboards. I know the city's trying hard to build some pickleball courts because that's the craze these days. Twenty-five years ago, it was handball or racquetball courts that, you know, everybody wanted to see built. And today it's pickleball. There, there's a plan to build three pickleball courts town, town, four pickleball courts out at Laurel Road Park. And that's good, that'll give some more opportunity to those. But we do need to have some, some things for kids too, there's good skate parks and things like that that the city could.
What about a well field? Joe Newender, he's the county commissioner, was pushing the whole concept of upgrading it, making it a regional sports field where you can get more kids involved in different sports and better fields and all that stuff.
No, no.
What do you stand on that?
Well, I'm in favor of that. Here's the thing on that, the, the well field is a regional park. I mean, the people utilizing it, some of them come from the city, but a large number are from the unincorporated areas of the county. And the county should be treating it as a regional park and supporting it. And it's good. Joe Newnder is on the city council, he knows that issue and, and he can lead that fight at the county level, I'd like to work with him on it.
All right, how about the hotel that's going up at the airport? It's in process.
It is.
It's been in process for years. Hotel vacancy, it is needed, we're about ninety, I think ninety-five percent during season. I think there's going to be a restaurant there in addition to trapeze stands. Where do you stand on that? Where, do you know where it's at?
Well, I mean, I did meet with the airport manager, he showed me the site plan. It's been leased, that's all done, it's a done deal, a ninety-nine year lease to a company out of Michigan. Their plan, which has not yet been submitted to the Planning Commission or the Planning Department for approval, calls for a four-story hotel motel, a one thousand seat arena where the old circus arena used to be, basically, and a restaurant. That developer's already bought a franchise for Chick-fil-A. Now, the land is zoned for the hotel, they don't need any special permission to go up to four stories, they don't need any special permission to put a Chick-fil-A in there. So some people will say, there's nothing we can do about that. And that's another case where I say, yes, there is something we can do about that. If the, the community feels, as I do, that our island of Venice is precious because it doesn't have fast food restaurants all over it, there isn't a Business Forty-One with a Burger King and a McDonald's and Taco Bell, those are all out on the bypass, then perhaps Chick-fil-A isn't the right restaurant to put there, right next to the Circus Bridge, right next to the Italian American Club. And, but he already owns the franchise and it's zoned to allow it. So the only thing you can do as a regulator is direct what kind of access you're going to have and things like that. But what we have is an additional power that's not being thought about is the power of persuasion. We need to persuade this businessman that that's not a good idea for the island of Venice which does not have these types of establishments on it. And get him to put that Chick-fil-A out there on the bypass. That's what I'd like to see.
All right, how about the airport now? You know, the airport, as you know, I've been here since the early eighties, went to high school and stuff, the airport's always been there. But one thing that some people have sent me, and I put the videos up, are the jets, which the jets haven't always been there and they're flying low and I put out videos and they are pretty loud. I get it, you bought a house in the pathway, but they didn't expect that. So what are your viewpoints on that? And also, if they ever do get the tower that the airport wants?
Yeah.
Which they say is to manage traffic, but I think people believe it's to bring in more traffic.
Right. I can talk about the tower a little bit because I've looked into that. I went down to the airport, actually, I went down to the city archives and read through the entire airport file from the beginning. Because I wanted to understand what the city's powers are versus the FAA. And the city has a lot more control than people like to say, they like to blame everything on the FAA. The city has been able to in the past get the FAA, they have to propose it, but they can propose almost anything, the FAA has to give final approval. But the FAA has given the city approval to do all kinds of things, golf course, restaurants, a manufactured home park on airport land, a condominium built on airport land. Now, a hotel built on airport land. So if the city has a vision of what can happen there, they, they seem to be able to get the cooperation of the FAA no matter what. So the city really is a lead agency on this, even if FAA has to finally check off. And FAA is checking off on things like, is it going to interfere with air traffic? You know, that's eight hundred and fifty acres, there's all kinds of things that can be done that are not going to interfere with air traffic. People don't know this, but the airport property goes across the intercoastal. It was so large when it was given to the city that when they cut the intercoastal, part of the airport property is on the other side. The Senior Friendship Center is on airport land. And that's another example, something we were allowed to do by FAA was build that. So if people understood the potential to serve the city with things that we all want, talking about affordable housing, what is that manufactured home park? What is that condominium called? Holiday Apartments. Now, I think they call it Holiday Condominium. Those are affordable housing options built on airport land. So the airport's very, very important to this city, eight hundred and fifty acres. And the airport didn't, wasn't there first and then houses. John Nolan planned houses all the way down Golden Beach area before that airport was ever built. And what you need to do is, we do need to listen to the people in that neighborhood about what's happening with the, you know, jets flying over their homes, they're not supposed to. There's a, you know, a voluntary program where they're supposed to direct themselves away from that, those neighborhoods. And we have to do a better job either enforcing them, and even if they're voluntary, then educating the pilots about that. And I met with some people that have planes there and we have a forum coming up with the airport group. But they were telling me different things that could be done. And what we, what we have been doing is saying, well, there's nothing we can do about that, you moved in near an airport. That's not the right answer. The right answer is what can we do to help? And I, I promise people that I will get involved in that and try to get some improvement for the benefit of those homeowners. We're not going to close the airport and we're not going to stop, you know, what's there. But we can make sure that they, they're better educated on what they're supposed to be doing, how those flights are supposed to be directed away from the neighborhood, how certain flights are supposed to stay at certain heights until the neighborhood's not a factor.
All right, I think I have three more questions. One I want to bring up, I, you know, I'd probably be remiss if I didn't ask this because it got a ton of attention on my Facebook pages and Instagram, Twitter, I don't know. The walkway from the jetty to the beach, there's been some, a little bit of erosion. And I guess last weekend, people were trying to walk from the parking lot down to the beach, they were being harassed by the same people that harassed over music, got the, got the jetty closed down early. They were putting up tape, videotaping people because they're trying to walk. And I understand the fifty-foot axis from the, where the water break line is. But what is the city going to do about a situation like that where this villa is trying to harass and prevent individuals from getting to the parking lot to the beach because of erosion?
I tell you, I'm not real familiar with that. I, I walk the easement myself because I walk from Venice Beach to the jetties, I like that walk. There's facilities at Venice Beach, facilities at the jetty. So an old guy can make that walk and then find the facilities he needs. But the, I'll have to look at it, Frankie, but clearly, there's an easement there. Clearly, residents and visitors have the right to walk that area. I haven't seen firsthand the erosion that's intruding on that. If it's keeping us, enforcing us to walk on private property, then we've got to get that, that easement restored and the land restored there so that people can walk there.
Yeah, if you have a chance, take a look, someone sent a picture and he gave me all the, what he saw out there. Let me ask you this. On a council that is heavily leaning towards developers, how are you, let's assume, let's assume, I forget the other lady's name, but the pro-development person, opponent wins, what is, what are you going to do as one of seven people to try to change the mindset of the council and try to direct them in a different direction to be more about controlled growth versus just approving everything that Mr. Neil, Mr. Castelli, all these guys want to develop?
Well, I mean, I, I think you're on the council, you have a microphone, a megaphone, and I can point out, you know, what, what is the conference of plan? What is that annexation plan? And, and praise it and urge people to be more considerate of that. I think, I, I've been saying this, I spoke to the council and said, you've got to get out in the neighborhoods and you should move your council meetings out into the neighborhoods. I've only seen that happen once here in the last five years. And it should happen regularly. I, I said, move the whole council meeting and do your business in the Pine Brook, you know, community center or in the Venice Golf and Country Club, River Club headquarters, clubhouse. And people said, well, it's difficult to move all the equipment and, and you know, we're online live and all that. And I said, okay, well, then, then let's have informational meetings. Let's, there's seven neighborhoods in the conference of plan, they're identified, which have very different needs. As I visit them, they ask completely different questions. Council needs to have a meeting every year in every one of those seven regions of the city and listen to the problems that are out there and react to them. And I, I think we can be better educated, better informed and more responsive. People, when two hundred and fifty people show up wearing shirts of the same color protesting an issue that, and saying, you know, the council's not listening, perhaps they need to listen better.
Well, you know, one thing that John Hollick used to do and something that he, when I ran a few times, I said I was going to do and I wish other council members would do, is once a month hold a business meeting where business owners can come out and talk to me at a cafe like this. And then once a month, maybe two weeks later, do a resident one, where residents can come out and meet with you. A lot of times, they say the forum where you go into the chambers are where they can talk to you, but it's not really that true. A lot of people are nervous about getting up at that podium, about talking, you've got three minutes or five minutes, depending on where you live. So would, would you be open to doing more of those where you're out there? Because I can't, I hate, as a resident, I don't like how council members are out there when they're politicking. As soon as they win, I don't see them for three years.
Well, I'm not running to hide from the public, I'm running to meet the public. And I, I promise you, if I'm elected, I'll be out there having those meetings. I want to get the whole council out there, if they won't come, I'll come. And if it's within my authority, I mean, I have to have requests for a city manager, you can't interfere in departments, but bring the police chief one place, bring the fire chief another place, or bring, the one place, Frankie, where I saw the city did it well, was after the hurricane a year ago. The devastation in the manufactured home park was so great that the city did hold a meeting at the, at the manufactured home park headquarters or meeting room. And the mayor came, one council member came, the fire chief, the police chief, the building department chief, and there were like four hundred people there asking questions about permits and, and their concerns about their property and what, what they could and couldn't do and about the fees. And I remember I called out for that, for waiving the fees for building permits for reconstruction of those properties. So that, that should just happen more often, regularly, we should be out there. And if, if nobody else would go out there, I'll go out there by myself on a listening tour and bring it back and report it live at the city council meetings if necessary. But I don't think it's necessary. I think somebody's got to facilitate it, somebody's got to arrange to go to Sawgrass and say, hey, if I set it up, would you welcome us at your community center, just hearing from your neighborhood? I consider those groups like the Central Venice Coalition advisory groups, that's twenty-eight neighborhood associations, homeowner associations that are unified in one community group. What better group should we think of as an advisory board to the city council than the Central Venice Coalition or the North Venice Neighborhood Alliance, which again, is multiple communities coming together to form a group to have a voice. And they should be listened to.
Okay, I'm going to let him do some closing remarks. Basically, I wanted to, I put up on the language or the wording with this video, this, interviews are open to any of the candidates, if I have time, we could schedule it, as long as they know that it's live, unedited, and you can't ask me not to ask certain questions. Ron is one of the few that have done it because he, and he knows if I don't like something, I'll throw it out at him and trip him up some. But what I'm trying to get to is try to get where you really stand because a lot of times you don't know with politicians where they stand.
That's terrible.
So closing remarks, we've got mail-in ballots coming up, anything you want to say about, I guess you guys, you and, I think her name's Joanne, signed some pledge, so whatever you want to talk about, it's your forum to do it here.
I did sign that pledge, it was a pretty simple pledge, my words, it said, one, don't defame your opponent. I'm not going to do that. Second point was stick to the issues, that's what I want, talk issues. And third, not accept money from any group where you don't know who put up the money, dark pack money. I'm not taking any dark pack money. So it was an easy pledge for me to sign. After I signed that pledge, I got endorsed by that group. Some other folks said, oh, they endorsed him. And then asked for a pledge, that's not the way it went. I was asked, would I make this pledge? They said, yes. Later, they said, we're endorsing him. So I'm proud of that endorsement, that's the successor group, Venice Thrives is the successor group to Venice Unites, the one that I volunteered, worked for a dollar as their attorney lead negotiator with the city. So I think it's an important local community group and I'm glad that they're active. I hope they'll have that pledge forever in the future for all candidates, not just for me. And I urge others to make the pledge, take the pledge, it's, it costs you nothing if you plan to campaign that way.
And just so you guys know how it works, because I'm very politically astute, basically, a third party will send out a mailer for a particular political party. And in my case, they sent out about fifty thousand of them supporting my candidate because we're both in the same race. They shouldn't do that. Then the opponent can sit there and say, I had nothing to do with it, I don't know what's going on and I don't want this. Although, I can tell you, in our case, we both knew what was going on, we're both Republicans, we knew damn well what was going on and he lied to the individuals. But that's how politicians get out of saying, I have no idea why they're doing this, I'm against it, but they're benefiting from it. Sorry, Ron.
You can tell, you can tell that they're benefiting from it and that they're cooperating with it because they have pictures of you when you were twenty-three-year-old paramedic or pictures of you around the kitchen table with your family. And they're promoting you and you had to help them to get that type of advertising and you're indebted to them. You know, it's not a graft situation, money in your pocket, but they facilitated your getting elected and you feel some obligation. So it's not the way to, way to go. And I'm not taking that kind of money, I don't want it.
Okay, and mail-in ballots and do you have a website and all that good stuff?
Facebook, website, run for Venice Council, Facebook, the same thing. Look me up. Welcome your review.
Are you going to be on any forums too? I know that we got a couple forums coming up, if you want to mention those.
We have four more coming, we've done three. They're all very educational, interesting, worth having attended if you wanted to see how the candidates feel about their finishes.
Which one's a public one, VASI?
VASI is the airport group, that's coming up this week. I think that one's Wednesday. Thursday's, I think, is the biggest one, it's at the community center. I think it's five to seven thirty. It is hosted by the League of Women Voters and the Venice Condoleezre in the biggest facility that we'll be in.
They allow audiences to ask questions, usually League of Women Voters, go ahead.
Yeah, then there's one at Eastgate. And then I believe.
There's one at church, isn't there Episcopal Church or something, I thought I saw?
There is one more Episcopal Church now, that's the VASI one.
Oh, is that VASI?
That's VASI. And then there's one more community that's going to hold one essentially for their neighborhood, like the Eastgate.
And, and guys, when you go to these debates, you can listen to them on the stage, but if you get there early, you can actually talk to them, you can grab Ron, you can say, hey, look, I don't like where you stand on this, and he can tell you if that's accurate and tough luck. Or you can say, well, that's not really my view, this is where I stand on it and try to persuade you.
Yeah, these candidates are all available too. I mean, you can meet them, it's not, we're not talking presidential or senate or something, it's a very local race and we're, we're all available, you can ask us correct questions at any of those forums, but you know, even, my phone number's out there on my literature, two three nine, two nine seven, seven one eight two, call me.
Okay. I don't give my phone number out, I get too many. I don't give my phone number out, I get too many solicitors, too many spam calls. Alright, guys, that's it. Go to his website if you wanna see more information or catch any of the two, I think he said, debates this week. They're really educational, they're great to go to if you can. The other debates are in communities, so unless you live in that community, you really can't get into them, because they're, they get maxed out, kind of. Alright, and that's it.
Great, thank you, Frankie.
Alright, thank you, guys.
Now you can surf.